Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for March 18th, 2019. Call upon Mayor Pro Tem John Marriott for-
Thank you, Your Honor. Would you please join me in a moment of silent reflection? And now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kristin Rush, if you'll call the role.
Mayor Williams-
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Marriott-
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer-
Here.
Councilmember Ford-
Here.
Councilmember Jones-
Here.
Councilmember McGough-
Councilmember Miller-
Here.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. McGough from tonight.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. McGough's excuse tonight. Next we have the minutes of March 4th, 2019. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand approved as presented. Next we have presentation of some after-prom checks, and Councilmember Nancy Ford will take care of that tonight.
Hi, I'd like to invite the committee representatives from our local high schools to the podium. Each year at this time, city council acknowledges the partnership of school staff, parents, local businesses, Arvada School Resource Officers, and others who join together to create a free, safe place for high school students to meet after prom. With elaborate decorations and creative themes, the high schools are transformed into imaginative places for the students to gather. All night and into the early morning, they eat, play games, win prizes, and safely party with friends at no cost. These after-prom parties provide a safe alternative to high-risk behaviors. Each school has a committee of parent volunteers who spend countless hours collecting donations, planning, preparing for, and staffing these events. It is estimated that each school hosts nearly 500 students, impacting nearly 2,500 teens at after-prom parties. Tonight, we recognize the committee representatives from our local high schools who are committed to making these events a success on behalf of young people in Arvada, and present each of the committees a cash donation. And I have in my hand certificates of recommendation, signed by the mayor and all of city council, and it reads, "City of Arvada, presented to After Prom Committee and the different high schools in recognition and appreciation for the hours, labor, creativity, and support given by the After Prom Committee and parent volunteers dedicated to providing a safe, drug- and alcohol-free environment for local high school students who attend the After Prom Party, and it's at Ralston Valley High School, Arvada High School-" It'd be easier if I read it here "- Pomona, Ralston Valley, and Stanley Lake High School."
If any of you would like to say anything, you're certainly welcome to. Well, in that case- At which school?
At Pomona.
At Pomona. Very good.
Yay, Pomona!
Yes. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Just real quick, I just want to thank all of you, because it takes a lot of volunteers to do this, and a lot of teachers, and even students, to make them make a magical place come alive. And having high schoolers that come through, I think all of us, some of us, most of us, have high schoolers that went through, and we appreciate everything you do. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh- Next I'll call upon Councilmember David Jones.
Thank you, Your Honor. Parkinson's Disease is the second-most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. The symptoms vary from person to person, and the exact cause is still unknown. As research continues, new technologies and treatments are being approved. In Arvada, Pedaling for Parkinson's hosts an indoor cycling class at the Apex Center. Parkinson's-specific exercise programs are offered at the Apex Center and the Duncan YMCA, and Home Watch caregivers host the Arvada Parkinson Support Group. And I know that there are some representatives from the Arvada Parkinson's community. If you come to the podium, I will read the proclamation. And again, this is a proclamation that is signed by the mayor and all members of council. Proclamation of the City of Arvada, whereas Parkinson's Disease is a chronic and progressive disorder with debilitating physical and mental effects, and is the second-most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. And whereas, it is estimated that more than 10 million people worldwide are living with Parkinson's, of which over 1 million are Americans, and approximately 17,000 reside in Colorado. And whereas, the symptoms vary from person to person, and can include tremors, slowness of movement, and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, and cognitive impairment. And whereas, although new medicines and therapies may enhance life for some time for people with Parkinson's, at the present, there is no cure. And whereas, increased education and research are needed to help find more effective treatments with fewer side effects, and ultimately, a cure for Parkinson's. And whereas, a multi-disciplinary approach to Parkinson's Disease care includes local wellness, support, and caregiver groups. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Arvada, Colorado, that April 2019 be designated Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, dated today, March 18th, 2019. I'll come down and present this.
I just wanted to say thank you for doing this. I know this is but an ongoing part of the City of Arvada, and we have hosted the Parkinson Support Group for six years. And just being part of people's lives is the research that we are doing, and trying to help them every day. So, we thank you for this and for recognizing this. And I'm glad that I have some friends up here who are tired of working.
Great. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Next I'll call upon Councilmember Dot Miller for a recognition.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the pleasure of recognizing the American Legion Post 161 this evening. So, I know we have members here. If you wouldn't mind coming down to the podium, I would love to tell you an incredible story about this post. The American Legion is turning 100, and Post 161 in Arvada is planning to celebrate. The organization as a whole traces its roots to March 15th to 17th, 1919, in Paris, France, in the aftermath of World War I. The American Legion was federally chartered on September 16th, 1919, and quickly became an influential force at the national, state, and local levels dedicated to service to veterans, strong national defense, youth, and patriotism. Post 161 was chartered on May 15th, 1928. The post was named for two local heroes who gave their lives defending our nation during World War I. Corporal William Wallace Wilmore Jr. and Arvada resident, U.S. Army Company C, 354th Infantry Regiment, 89th Division, died in battle on the French front on September 13th, 1918. Private Benjamin A. Richter, a Wheat Ridge resident, was a member of Battery E, 341st Field Artillery, was killed in action on September 15th, 1918, in France. Both were laid to rest in France. Wilmore Richter, Post 161, is proud to have donated the Eagle Statue outside City Hall. The post carries the colors to start the Harvest Festival Parade. It sponsors Legion baseball, an oratorical contest for high school students, and a Boy Scout troop. Once a month, Post 161 hosts the Community Roundtable. Members of the Arvada Whitmore- Wilmore Richter, Post 161, are here to accept the certificate honoring American Legion's Centennial Celebration. And this reads, "Certificate of Recognition from the City of Arvada, Presented to the American Legion, Post 161, in recognition of the American Legion's 100 Years of Service, Presented this 18th Day of March 2019, and signed by the mayor and members of council." I'll bring it down to you.
You know, who knew, who knew back in 1919 that the American Legion would come this far? So, on behalf of Wilmore Richter, Post 161, thank you to the city council and all, and all the whole city of Arvada for helping support us. We had, we was honored this last Friday night to have some of the family of Richter join us for dinner that night. I didn't know if there was anybody still around, but I was glad they was able to contact us. So, on behalf of Wilmore Richter, thank you again, and thank the citizens of Arvada for everything they do for us also. Thank you.
Great. Nancy Ford's got a comment she'd like to make to you gentlemen.
Well, I just wanted to thank the American Legion 161. Many of my colleagues here and I all go to the roundtables on the first Friday of every month. We find them very informative and enjoyable, and I want to thank you for doing that for our community, and all the other things that you do for our community.
Great. Okay, now is the time for our public comment portion. We've got several people that have signed up, and there's a lot of people in the room. I have the option to move public comment after all of our business items tonight. I'm not going to do that, but I am going to limit, at this juncture, to the people that I have sign-up sheets for. If you wish to speak after we've conducted our public hearings tonight, you can certainly stick around for that as well. But I'm going to limit public comment right now to those I have sign-up sheets from. And the first I'm going to call is Alan Best and Kathy Laspin. If you'll come down to the podium.
Councilmembers, we're here tonight to talk about a small matter that's kind of big as I look outside my house at 5705 Yukon Street. On a daily basis, I look out and I see a lot of cars moving fast. I sometimes hear horns. And what we have going, and this is, again, 57th and Yukon, where the yoga studio is and the Alts parking lot, is an issue of too much speed, given short sidelines. It's a thing, a situation that has created lots of accidents. Now, I first appeared before the city council in, well, I can remember when the Denver Broncos had a quarterback named Tebow. It's been a while. My joke was going to be that night, and I didn't tell it, but I said, you know, "I'm worried about T-boning." In fact, there have been some T-boning accidents since then. And I would like to introduce Kathy, who has seen her fair share of this, and like me, every time they enter this intersection, go do some Hail Marys and wonder what's going to happen once you get into the intersection.
So, the, what I've, what I've seen is the people who are coming down 57th Street from the north to the south, so they're traveling from the library, you know, away from the main part of town, that's where the main speeders seem to be coming that way. And then, the other people are stopping that are on Yukon Street. And they pull out, and sometimes, you know, when I'm pulling out there myself, I'm always really watching very careful, and even then backing up and pulling back sometimes, because it's just hard to see. That's part of the thing. And then, if the people that are coming from the library direction around 57th have a green light, that's when it, you know, really gets bad, because they don't have to stop. They tend to, like, get through that green light and step on it, I think. And so, just Saturday afternoon, I saw the T-bone thing. It didn't happen, but it almost did. It was, you know, the screeching and the brakes, and the person had tried to cross on Yukon Street, had tried to drive across, and the other person was coming really fast, and I know they didn't see them, and they almost hit them. And so, you know, that's just one more instance of it, but it's the same thing. So, I'll turn it back.
You know, there's a lot of talk about driverless cars and how that's going to improve safety, but we're aways from that. That's going to be a while. We need some solution in the interim. I think it would be an easy thing to put up some stoplights, or, excuse me, stop signs. Make it the same as what is in front of the library, a Webster. Treat them the same. I don't have anything more to say.
What we'll do is we'll have the city manager talk with his traffic department and the police department. We'll look at what the history of accidents has been. I can tell you, I was a passenger with the city attorney and almost got T-boned there, so I know exactly what you're talking about. But we'll look into it, and we'll get back to you. We've got your information.
Thank you for having this opportunity to have direct democracy.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'm going to do is I'll call up three names. If you'll line up, and I'll just keep recirculating or adding names to the list as we work through them, so that we can move these efficiently. We've got three minutes per speaker. I'll remind some of you who weren't here for the last time, we don't, we don't applaud, we don't boo, we don't during public comments, to make comments to the city council. We're not going to respond to you tonight. We're going to have a public hearing on this issue coming up on April the 1st. I expect some of you will come back for that, and council will be asking questions and having comments at that time. So, I'm going to call up Kristin Hill, Nancy Wiley, and Nicholas Scheicher. Good evening.
Hi. I was here a couple weeks ago, speaking. I know you heard all the issues that people are concerned about. I had one to raise, but actually, what I'd like to say is, what a beautiful job of honoring citizens of Arvada that you started this meeting off with, caring about people. And all I ask is that you care about what you're doing to the residents of West Arvada with this highway to nowhere, which how you're ruining something beautiful that you built, these homes, these communities, people's lives, and now you're going to do something so destructive to it, you know? And I've heard, there's talk about a hospital out there. I've worked on over 40 hospitals in the last 10 years throughout the United States, and I know something that's, and I may be mistaken, and if I'm misspeaking, I apologize, but I know something that's very important about hospitals. And I've seen how it's almost destroyed the best-laid plans, and that is a helipad. And I know what wind does to a helipad. It will not be on the roof of any building out there, and I know what it costs to build one. And you need them for trauma centers, or the ROI of the hospital doesn't work, and I have seen whenever it's not planned for, and it comes out down the road, when teams like mine are working on them, what it does. So, all I ask is that you really, really slow this down and do some city planning in a big picture, and understand a master plan. There wasn't a master plan done to understand this highway going through these residential areas. You didn't really, really slow that down. You allowed a housing developer to become too close. Slow down. Do proper due diligence. Once you are destructive, you can't undo it. That's all I ask, and I thank you.
Thank you. Next, Nancy Wiley?
Hi, I'm Nancy Wiley. Can you hear me? I'm a sixth-generation native of Arvada, so I've seen a lot that's gone in the city for decades. And not all of it's good. Some of it's been great. But I also represent a lot of people who are not here tonight. Very few people, this is really scary for me to do this, let alone, you know, come say something in front of a lot of people. What I'm asking is that the $2.5 million of our taxpayer money not be spent on the Jefferson Parkway. I am hoping common sense rules over a few people making a lot of money at the detriment of human lives and our quality of life. I would like to know how many of you have read Kristin Iverson's book, Full Body Burden? Have any of you? One of you? Have any of you, how many of you have read Randy Stafford's papers that were presented to the city council and Jefferson Parkway Authority?
Again, this is your time to comment rather than asking questions.
Okay, I, this is part of what I need to ask, and because those of you that haven't, it is, it's, why not? You are making a decision based on 3 million peoples of Metro Denver being harmed by what is under the soil, under Indiana. This is going to be one of the most important decisions you're going to make. And this Parkway affects a lot more people than the people that just live nearby. This may sound ridiculous, and I've thought about this a lot. I really wonder if people truly understand the danger of plutonium, what it really is. If it were a flesh-eating virus, and the dust particles were out there, and we knew that if you got it on your limbs, your face, and you would be, die, people would be up in arms. They would absolutely would not allow anything to happen if they knew there was a flesh-eating virus out there. And plutonium is 1,000 times worse. And we have got to understand how dangerous it is. One, two, one particle of plutonium is two microns, which can attach to a piece of pollen, and you breathe it in, and you die. One particle is all it takes to die from plutonium. This isn't just, you know, like, X-rays or something. Just because we've spent $6 million already on this Parkway does not mean we need to keep funding a boondoggle of a roadway. And please do not worry. You will save face for voting no against this. If you're feeling that kind of pressure, that you, because we've spent this money and you have to do this, please don't feel that way, because you're going to have a lot of people. Can I just finish my last sentence? If you vote to give our tax money away against the will of the people to fund a road that is not needed or wanted, but most of all, knowing the risk of putting people's lives in danger, and most likely death, I don't know how you guys will be able, ever be able to sleep at night or live with yourselves. So, please do the right thing and vote no on giving them Parkway money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas, and then Jeff Stanney Chef Sky, and then Scott Snyder.
Hi, I'm Nicholas Schweiger. Times are changing faster than ever. It seems that every month, our leading innovators create something new that will change our lives. Some of these advancements will transform the transportation system. They plan to build a tollway for 20 years from now, assuming that there are no new transportation advancements. Yet Tesla and SpaceX are pioneering flying cars to make roads completely unnecessary. Google is working on self-driving cars, and who knows? Some people may be living on Mars in 20 years. We can predict how driverless cars will allow for higher density of cars on the roads, thus reducing the need for more roads. I know you guys all think that I'm just a kid, and that flying cars are the most outlandish idea you have ever heard. But, you see, my mom says that she didn't have email in college. Now, look where we are. These are just the technological advancements we can think of. We can't even imagine how our future will look in 20 years. Why should we fund a highway for an unforeseeable and unpredictable era of new technology? Also, when building the highway, we assume that people will still be driving to work each day. In 20 years, technology will allow for more working from home and virtual reality meetings. As more and more companies are opening online stores instead of retail stores, there would be less people driving around to go shopping. Amazon is taking over the shopping industry and is currently working on drone delivery systems, which wouldn't require any delivery trucks on the roads. If you choose to build this highway, you will also have to go through rocky flats, which is a heavily contaminated area with plutonium. I know there has been, have been tests done to show that the soil is not contaminated, but those are only on the top of the soil. If you choose to go through there, you will dig deep enough to unearth all that plutonium and release into this atmosphere. Then the plutonium will be carried to nearby places, possibly endangering people. This radioactive material can dramatically increase the probability of cancer in the later stages of life. As other people have shared, this highway will have limited use in the present, and all of these technological advancements point to the, to a highway that is pointless in the future. Why would you spend $250 million to build a road to nowhere that has no necessary function today or 20 years from now? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sky, and then Scott Snyder, and then Don Figgins.
Good evening. Before I retired, I was a Health and Safety Manager for DuPont, and part of my job was to evaluate data and determine truth or not, or disprove the truth. And typically, you'd ask a question, you'd have a hypothesis, you collect the data, and then you would evaluate it. So, I want to kind of pose three test questions. The first one is, is the information that's been provided by the council or your agents absolutely true, lacking spin, or cherry pick to choose those facts that seem to benefit your case? Second one is, are you dedicated to delivering superior service to enhance the lives of everyone in the community? And the third one is, are you focused on our protection? So, if you consider the first test, that's really a measure of honesty. If you consider the second test, that's your mission statement. And the third test is a, is a measure of how focused you are in protecting us. So, let's consider some, just some of the comments that I've heard in the last couple of months. So, the first one is, the Parkway completes the Beltway? Nope, not true. Hasn't completed the Beltway for years. Nope, not true, hasn't completed the Beltway for years. It connects two public roads, and yet it's sitting on the JPPHA website with this nice picture suggesting it's there. It also says it will reduce traffic. There's no proof of that. Second one, is the toll road the preferred route? Heard it over and over again. Nope, not the preferred route. It was approved when it was submitted through an undeveloped parcel of land, but in all honesty, if you had gone in and said, well, we're going to use a development to buy the land, to acquire the land, would have been rejected. The third one is, and I've heard this again, there is no CDOT money. So CDOT is bankrupt? Nope. CDOT has plenty of money, but they're focusing on transportation projects. They don't feel a need to fund or accelerate development. The residents were given adequate warning about the Parkway. Well, let's take a look at that exit sign. It's red, it's over a door, it tells you what to do. A sign that you can't see, a sign that is not, that does not describe the hazard, and is not visible for obvious people to see, is no warning. Fifth one is, the road is necessary to control traffic. Your traffic studies, and there's two of them, has said that the toll road will accelerate development. Doesn't speak at all about whether or not the town wants development, or that the people want development. Just says it will spur development, and I believe it will. But we also know that if it's not necessary for the town, if the town doesn't need it, do we really want it? The last, next to last one is, the town will not lower the speed, the speed limit on Indiana. Well, the plan says you're going to put a roundabout in. How is that not going to reduce the speed? And the last one is, the town had one chance to do the right thing, and it failed when it developed this property. The sad thing is, if you had followed your own zoning ordinances, our homes would, would have been at least a hundred and fifty feet away from the road right away, but you didn't do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, Scott Snyder, Don Figgins, and Brett Vernon.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Scott Snyder, and I'm with the movement to stop the Jefferson Parkway. After serving twenty-six years in the Navy, my family chose to retire and move back to Arvada because of the great schools, and the community, and the neighborhood that we chose to live in. My residence backs up to the future Parkway, and the default response we hear when voicing our opposition is, you knew it was going in before you bought your house, so why, why would you buy? And we did make this decision based on balancing the pluses and minuses of this property. However, much of what we were told or shown when considering the purchase in Leyton Rock have become cases of misinformation or untruths. Number one, you will hear the lack of specifics in the information disclosure. Number two, my neighbors and I were told the Parkway would be at least fifty feet below of the backyard grade that we currently have, so deep you wouldn't see the cars or even the streetlights if they're put in. Three, we were told that the Parkway had been in planning for over twenty years and probably wouldn't start construction for at least another ten to fifteen, if at all. And finally, we were told that the new elementary school will be built within walking distance of our house, a huge positive for our resale value, balancing the Parkway. That is not going to happen. We weighed our decisions to purchase based on this misinformation and untruths. Why am I being expected to accept this knowledge in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, when I bought, but yet the Jefferson Parkway Authority is allowed to change and update as we go? An example, since our closing in two thousand and fifteen, the new sound study shows that the road noises in my backyard are going to increase by nearly eight times over current ambient. The road detail, or road grade detail behind my property is not going to be fifty feet. I can still see the entire road from my main living floor. And now we know that there are no direct access points for Leyton Rock residents, and the planned route is not useful for anyone in Arvada. It just increases congestion. I am, I partly blame the builder and developer for spreading these untruths, but the majority of blame goes to the supervision of this council. Where is the oversight letting a developer build homes so close to a major highway? Why am I not afforded the same protection under city ordinance for noise pollution and standoffs that the rest of Arvada expects? Arvada has members on the Jefferson Parkway Authority who should have had knowledge of the negative impacts of safety noise and congestion this Parkway will have on Arvada residents. Where do their loyalties lie? Finally, you may think this is just a Leyton Rock resident complaining, and that it's not your district's problem. On the contrary, the debacle that is the Jefferson Parkway is apparent to us as Leyton Rock residents because we're in, it's in our backyard. The rest of Arvada is unaware, but maybe that's what you're hoping for. However, once construction has started on this toll, toll road to nowhere, Arvada residents will realize the negative impacts and question why their elected officials allowed such a poor plan to move forward. Your constituents will hold you accountable. I ask you to stop supporting this toll road and vote no on approving the two thousand and nineteen, two-million-dollar funding for the Jefferson Parkway Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don Figgins, then Brett Vernon, and then Jerry Rebe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm with the movement to stop the Jefferson Parkway, and tonight, my comments are going to focus on the noise level issue in Leyton Rock that will significantly increase due to tollway traffic. Are you aware that three weeks ago, I and about eighty-five others attended a meeting in Leyton Rock? The Jefferson Parkway Advisory Committee organized the meeting to discuss the results of the tollway traffic noise study and present mitigation options for homes that border the tollway. During the meeting, there were discussions about various mitigation options, but the presenters focused us on the eight-foot to twenty-foot tall sound walls. Tollway noise is a serious issue because the noise study data shows that seventy percent of the homeowners bordering the tollway will hear noise that will sound up to eight times louder than they hear today. Let me repeat, they're going to hear noise levels that will increase up to eight times for seventy percent of the residents bordering the tollway. The noise study also explains that erecting twenty-foot sound walls, which by the way is going to cost a lot of money, will only reduce the tollway noise from eight times louder to four to five times louder. For reference, CDOT's Noise Abatement Criteria states that two times traffic noise increase is a significant, and noise abatement should be part of their road design. And based on what's been discussed so far, there's no amount of noise mitigation acceptable for these homes bordering this tollway. Also, are you aware that Federal Highway Authority advocates that local governments use a regulatory authority to prohibit incompatible development adjacent to highways? Or require planning, design, and construction of developments that minimize highway traffic noise impacts? Clearly, the council and the JPA have ignored these guidelines. We've heard from members of this council and authority that mitigation will be included in the RFP. However, based on the federal highway guidelines, the city had an obligation when development was approved to require a design that incorporated proper sound, light, and safety mitigations for a future tollway. Plain and simple, that didn't happen. So now there's no amount of mitigation that really will prevent permanent harm to our residential community. In closing, you can do irreparable harm to our community and the lives of thousands of Arvada residents, or you can decide to protect it. The choice is yours. We'll be watching how you vote. I urge you to stop supporting the tollway and vote no on any future funding for it.
Thank you, sir. Brett Vernon, and Jerry Rebe, and then Laura Norman.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I've appeared before this council several times, advocating various mitigation measures for the Jefferson Parkway, and two of them that I pushed quite hard on, creative sound mitigation and a pedestrian walkway, are now going to be included as enhancements in the RFP per a conversation I had with Bill Ray about a week ago. Thank you very much for that. One thing that, well, this leads me to think that we are almost there. These are enhancements, they're not requirements. We shouldn't be negotiating with ourselves. We should be able to put these in as requirements into the RFP. A ten-million-dollar pedestrian bridge that will get schoolchildren from one side of the Parkway to the other will cost roughly eleven cents in a toll from one end of the Parkway to the other, something like one-point-one cents a mile. Creative sound mitigation is at no cost. Rubberized asphalt has a longer life, less maintenance needs, and it reduces sound levels by four to seven decibels just by using rubberized asphalt, lowering the speed limit from sixty-five to fifty-five, or reduce the decibel level roughly three to four decibels, somewhere in that range. So a ten, those two together, at no cost, a ten-decibel decrease in the sound level coming from the Parkway. That's roughly half of what the sound level, of the increase in the sound noise is, and that's free. It's hard to not put that in the RFP. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Rebe, and I'm with the movement to stop Jefferson Parkway. My comments are in regards to the information disclosure. Two weeks ago, we talked of two requirements put into the Leyton Rock annexation agreement to ensure transparency to future homeowners that a high-speed tollway was going right through the heart of their community. One of these requirements was an information disclosure. This disclosure was drafted and used for the very first homebuyers in Leyton Rock, which was located in subdivision one. Unfortunately, the disclosure is horrendously inadequate and was never updated, even for recent home purchases in subdivision six, where we are. Let me share a couple of things about this disclosure. Most of them refer only to homes in subdivision one, despite the fact that homes also border the tollway in subdivisions two and five. They state the tollway may generate traffic, noise, light, and other visual impact affecting subdivision, again, only number one. There is no may here. Noise levels will increase significantly in several of the now six subdivisions, as you've already heard. It does state it is not comprehensive, and you should conduct your own investigation, which my husband and I did, which proved to be fruitless. And I want to add a little note. We saw, finally, as we were into the process of our contract, sitting in our developer's office, behind a little chair where I was, a sign like this, and I looked and saw the tollway, but I didn't know that's what it was. I said, what is that? She said, I said, is that a river? She goes, no, that's the Parkway. They were not putting anything up, developers were not forthcoming, I want you to understand that. So the mistakes, misgivings that we've been told really happened. If you truly want a transparency, this is what the disclosure should have said. The Jefferson Parkway is a four-lane, high-speed tollway with a posted speed limit of sixty-five miles per hour. Community residents will not be able to have access to the tollway if it has limited access. In certain areas in subdivision one, two, and five, residences will be sixty-five yards or less from the actual edge of the tollway. Und signed parties should be aware of potential safety hazards related to the tollways' extreme closeness to backyards and residences. Also, that fires may cross the Parkway right of way into residential areas in subdivisions number one, two, four, and six, and beyond. As you've heard, noise levels in subdivisions one, two, and five are expected to increase. The Parkway is also expected to be constructed along the current depth that is seen in the highway now, as you've heard developers said it was going to be fifty feet down. Finally, a comprehensive disclosure should have been presented early on in the buying process, such as when the buyer put a deposit down in a specific site, not at contract signing or closing, leaving no time for buyers to complete any research. Tomorrow, you will receive a copy of one of the final typical information disclosures and a copy of the disclosure of our group drafted.
Okay, thank you.
Between lack of signage and poor disclosure, it's no wonder that people are upset and continue to come before you. We're asking you to make the right decision. Vote no for future funding on April first.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then Bobby Martinez, and Mike Rebe, and Wendy Fuller-Buff.
Good evening. My name is Laura Norman. I'm a resident of Leyton Rock. You'll excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I am a Colorado native, and I have lived in the city of Arvada for over forty years. We have a four-generation family living in Leyton Rock. I call it my little piece of heaven, and I'm going to get emotional. I see deer in the backyard. My grandchildren can go out and play. We don't have to worry about them, but with the Northwest Parkway coming into view, it's a big concern. One of the things I'd like to say is I'd like to give a big thank you to Councilwoman Ford and the writer from the Denver Post, John Aguilar, for responding to my email with concerns. I appreciate your feedback. Thank you. You know, you've heard all the stories. We're concerned about air quality. We're concerned about safety for our children. We're concerned about the risk of contamination from the Rocky Flats area. My son is a geologist, and he did soil and water samples during the cleanup for Rocky Flats, and I asked him the other day, do we have a concern here? And he said, absolutely, we do. I think we need to take a closer look at that. One other thing we need to look at is property values. We've talked to several realtors that said our property values could go down ten to seventeen percent. I did a rough calculation, I'm not a numbers person, but just from the fourteen-hundred homes in the Leyton Rock area, that could be a one-point-five decrease in revenue for Jefferson County annually in decreased property taxes, and I think that's something that we need to look at. I would like you guys to do one thing tonight. I would love for you to go home, take a look at your families and your homes, and when you go to bed tonight, think, would I want the Jefferson Parkway in my backyard? I really want you to think hard about that. What would you do if it was in your backyard? I also would like to extend an invite to my home, to all of you, to kind of take a look at how it's going to affect us, and, you know, I'll bake chocolate chip cookies and make a pot of coffee, so the invitation is out there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bobby Martinez. Good evening.
Good evening. I keep hearing how important the Jefferson Parkway is for the economy, jobs, and growth for the city of Arvada and Jefferson County. If it's so important, why wasn't it given priority over the building of Leyton Rock and Candela's? I can only speculate that you needed those neighborhoods to move ahead with the Parkway. If that's the case, then shame on you for allowing homes to be built so close to this highway. It was very reckless and shows how little you care about the safety and welfare of the citizens of Arvada. You could and should have put restrictions on how close homes could be built to the Parkway. I realize some of you weren't there when some of these decisions were made, but you're here now, and you have the power to stop it. At the last meeting, many residents voiced their concerns about all the dangers. Let me leave you with one last thought. The last two times it snowed, there were two rollovers on ninety-three. Now imagine the Parkway in those conditions. Keep in mind, it will be elevated in some areas, and the speed limit is sixty-five. That is going, and it's going to ice over quickly. I can't imagine the car accidents we will witness. We'll be lucky if those accidents stay on the Parkway and don't find their way into someone's backyard. We can only hope and pray if that happens, there isn't a child building a snowman in that backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Mike Rebe, and I'm with the movement to stop Jefferson Parkway. I'd like all the movement folks to stand tonight. Could you do that? Thank you. Like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, being present, and making comments or supporting those who are. So you've certainly heard about the Concorde jetliner, but what about the Concorde fallacy? It's the idea that you continue to spend money on a project in order not to waste the money and effort you've already put into it, which may lead to bad decisions, and that's what the British and French governments did when they continued to fund the airliner well beyond the time it made economic sense. So Arvada has put almost five million dollars into the tollway so far. Those are sunk costs that are in the past and shouldn't be factored into your decision. What you should be thinking about is how much money, more money, you could pour into the tollway. Let's start with an additional three-point-two million dollars. That's the two-point-oh million you're looking at on April one, and I've just added another one-point-two for the next three years, four-hundred thousand a year, assuming you still need to fund the operations of the authority during construction. Also, the sunk costs could be small in comparison to future legal expenses, which may come from individual or class action lawsuits from homeowners downwind of Rocky Flats. from individual or class-action lawsuits from homeowners downwind of Rocky Flats, from Leyden Rock residents, or from workers exposed to radiation during construction. So 3.2 million more of taxpayer money going forward, potentially hundreds of thousands, maybe millions of dollars in legal costs. What's your estimate? I hope the council has one as you make decisions going forward. Now, we know you have an agreement with the Parkway Authority to get your money back, but there's no guarantee you're going to see that money. You may get reimbursed over two to three decades, and that would be after the parkway starts making money. Or you may get nothing back because the project fails to make money. So like the Concorde, we ask that you not fall into the trap that your past contributions should influence your future decisions about the tollway. And if you base your decisions on future costs and benefits, you'll see that the best decision is to stop the funding now. And what about the benefits to Arvada, where over eighty-five percent of the population lives east of Indiana and will likely never use this tollway? Now, we've talked to some of you outside of these meetings, and we've heard less about transportation and more about development, jobs, and a hospital. And we'd all like to see a major medical facility here in Arvada, but why is a tollway needed to accomplish that? Tollway customers are going to be mostly commuters going from Golden to Broomfield or back and forth. The main customers of the hospital, Arvadans, are going to come from public roads to the south and east to get to the planned location for this facility. So let's not do harm to major residential communities in Arvada. Let's not put the lives and financial health of residents at risk from cars, debris, fires, and harmful emissions. Let's not put the health of thousands of Northwest residents at risk from re-suspension of plutonium. Let's not put more traffic lights on ninety-three and one-twenty-eight. I could go on, I'm out of time. We're asking you to do the right thing on April 1. Choose health over wealth and stop funding the tollway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Wendy? Is it Roth?
It's Federoff.
Very good.
Yeah. So as you heard, my name is Wendy Federoff. My family and I moved to Arvada three years ago from the northeast. So I'm part of that recent influx of Coloradans. But with the negatives that sometimes come with that, you get positives, and some of that is diversity and thought. So I come here today with a fresh set of eyes and a request to ask you to vote no for the 2019 funding of the Jefferson Parkway Highway Authority, which will be before you at the next meeting. The toll road should not be built for many reasons, but tonight I want you to consider the impact on Arvada of not building the road on both development and traffic. So one of the goals of this project is to spur development in the region. Are you aware that the 2017 Toll Road Economic Impact Study states that these areas, this area will continue to develop with or without the toll road? In a no-build situation, the area stands to gain a net fiscal benefit of almost $112 million over twenty years. Isn't that enough? The study does not estimate how much of that will be in Arvada versus Broomfield, which is another very important question, since the majority of the 9.2 miles are in Arvada. Regarding traffic management, are you aware that the 2016 Michael Baker Traffic Modeling Study states that the traffic impact to major intersections in the area is the same with or without the toll road? Furthermore, the study states that these intersections are all graded as failing with or without the toll road. There are mitigations needed at those intersections that are outside the scope of the Jefferson Parkway Highway Authority. One can assume that with growth in the area, we need traffic capacity. However, with failing traffic grades in both a build or no-build situation, what value is that road adding? The realization should be faced that the window of opportunity to complete a traditional beltway around Denver may have passed, and other solutions and growth plans should be considered. Mike already spoke to the money part and sunk costs. I'm in full agreement that you are opening the city up to liability by moving forward with this project. So in closing, I ask you to consider, what are the real benefits of the Jefferson Parkway? Development will happen anyway, and traffic problems will not be solved for the residents that you serve. And think about this. Is it possible that without the toll road, Arvada will become an even more desirable place for people to reside and work versus a place where commuters from towns north and south of us just pass by on a toll road?
Thank you for your comments. Thank you all for your comments. I'm going to move now to the consent agenda. We have three items on it. The first is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and American West Construction for a 27-inch to 42-inch raw water main replacement in an amount not to exceed approximately $1.4 million. Second item on the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Supreme Roofing Done Right, doing business with Supreme Roofing, for roof replacement in Arvada's wastewater treatment facility in an amount not to exceed approximately $205,000. Third item is a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and NV5 Inc. for owners' representative services for the Parks Fleet Building Construction Project in an amount not to exceed approximately $182,000. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Ford?
I move that the consent items R-19 through 029, I mean, excuse me, let me say that again. I move that the consent items R-19 dash 029 through R-19 dash 031 be approved.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. McGough being in excused absence tonight. Next, we have a resolution, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for public improvements for the Candela's Medical Filing Number One between the city of Arvada, Colorado, and Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Jefferson Center Metropolitan District has submitted the final plat, Public Improvement Plans, for City Job Number 3521 to construct public streets, water lines, mains, water lines and mains, sewer lines and mains, drainage facilities, and public landscaping within and adjacent to the Candela's Medical Filing Number One development area to serve the six lots. That'll be included in the final plat. This intergovernmental agreement would, you know, creates the terms and conditions for delivery of those public improvements, and we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay, council, any question or action you'd like to take? Mr. Pfeifer?
I move that Resolution 19 dash 32, the Resolution Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement for Public Improvements for Candela's Medical File, Filing Number One between the city of Arvada, Colorado, and the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number One be approved.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. McGough being in excused absence. Next, we have one ordinance on first reading. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Get to it here.
I move that Council Bill 19 dash 012, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2019, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing set for April 1, 2019, at 6:15 p.m.
Motion for approval on first reading. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. McGough being in excused absence. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19008, an ordinance adding Section 62 dash 36 pedestrian, hindering the flow of traffic, Section 62 dash 36.5 pedestrian use of roadway, center medians, and Section 62 dash 37 solicitation to Chapter 62 offenses, repealing other sections of the Arvada City Code and establishing penalties for violations of the new sections. Call upon our legal counsel for advice. Nora?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city monitors traffic crash statistics and noticed that crashes involving pedestrians have been increasing over the past several years. In addition, traffic statistics indicate that crashes that result in pedestrian fatalities usually occur along roadways with higher speed limits. In an attempt to improve pedestrian safety, the city has introduced an ordinance that works to reduce the number of circumstances during which pedestrians come into close proximity with vehicles along roadways, and also to minimize the time during which pedestrians are in close proximity to vehicles. The proposed ordinance does three things. It makes it unlawful for a pedestrian to, excuse me, willfully and unnecessarily obstruct traffic. It also makes clear that raised center medians are intended as traffic control devices that divide traffic moving in opposite directions along a roadway, and that they are not intended to be used by pedestrians except as a refuge along a crosswalk area. It makes it illegal to access or use a raised center median for purposes other than crossing a roadway at a crosswalk, as long as the area has been posted with a sign prohibiting that unlawful access or use. And lastly, it places limits on how pedestrians may engage in soliciting from the occupant of a vehicle along a roadway. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance, and staff is present to answer any questions you have about the proposed ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Pfeifer?
If there's no comments, I'll make the motion.
I see no other lights. You may proceed.
I move that Council Bill 19 dash 008, an ordinance adding Section 62 dash 36 pedestrian hindering the flow of traffic, Section 62 dash 36.5 pedestrian use of roadway, center medians, and Section 62 dash 37 solicitation to Chapter 62 offenses, repealing other sections of the Arvada City Code and establishing penalties for those violations of the new sections be approved on final reading, number 4679, and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. McGough being absent. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19009, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 58 dash 72, presiding judge, and adding Section 58 dash 72.5 clerk of the court to Article III Municipal Judges of Chapter 58 Municipal Court of the Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In accordance with your direction, we are clarifying the roles of the municipal court employee, municipal court employees by repealing and reenacting the section outlining the duties of the municipal court judge and adding information about the role of the court administrator. Essentially, what we are doing is having the municipal, pardon me, the court administrator working, reporting to the city manager. City manager will be responsible for supervising the court administrator. The court administrator will in turn be responsible for supervising the deputy court administrator and the rest of the court staff in the municipal court. The judge will continue to report to the city council as one of your employees, and this ordinance further clarifies the compensation and so forth associated with the municipal court judge. This is in accordance with your direction, and therefore, we've put together this ordinance and are recommending approval of the ordinance.
Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council question or action. Ms. Ford?
I'd like to make a motion if there are.
You may.
I move that CB 19 dash 009, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 58 dash 72, presiding judge, and adding Section 58 dash 72.5 clerk of the court to Article III Municipal Judges of Chapter 58 Municipal Court of the Arvada City Code be approved on final reading, numbered 4680, and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. McGough being absent. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19 dash 010, an ordinance amending Section 30 dash 4 of the Arvada City Code pertaining to council districts. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The, what is being proposed here is that we amend the Section 30 dash 4 of the City Code, which is to adopt a council-district boundary map by ordinance. That's in accordance with Section 4.11 of the Arvada City Charter. Essentially, what we're recognizing is that there has been a significant amount of growth in the north and west areas of the community, and as a result, we are out of, we have a deviation between the largest populated or largest district, Council District Four, with over 28,000 registered voters, and Council District Two with 1,8134 registered voters. We could have had, could have waited until the next census. Information from the next census was received. However, those numbers will not be available to us until 2021 or 2022, as we have elections that would be coming up in 2019 and 2021. We felt we needed to put this information in front of the council and recommend that three options to you in terms of revising the council-district boundaries. We reference the fact that in the, in Congress and also in the state legislature, there is a 5% deviation test, which, between the largest district and the smallest district, as a way of testing whether or not there should be any boundaries that are adjusted. We do utilize the Colorado Municipally Boundary, which is a 10% deviation test. In the cases that is before you today, we have more than a 10% deviation between the largest district and the smallest district, which, again, suggested to us that we needed to bring this matter to your attention. You were provided with three options, and I believe the, the images of those options are up on the screen right now. Option number one is an option that provides, corrects the deviation, also provides some known boundaries and landmarks in the community that seem to, I think, resonate in terms of being able to easily discern the boundaries of the districts. But certainly, all three of the options that are available for you today are presented, and we recommend that you choose one of them, and that we go ahead and implement this for the 2019 election.
Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council questions or actions. Could we see the other options up there? We've got option, okay, there's option two. And then option three. All of them shrink District Four somewhat to increase population counts in the other, primarily what District One and Two and Three, obviously. Mr. Jones?
So just for clarification, the pink lines, are those precincts?
Yes.
And so we have to make sure that we're not cutting a precinct in half?
Correct.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I don't have so much of a question, but I just want to, I want to speak to this. I think when I look at whether we should do this now or do this when, after the census, we talk, we would be looking at doing this three or four years from now and have even a bigger imbalance. And I think we've got such a big imbalance now. I think it's entirely appropriate for us to do this now. You know, ideally, you'd do it after every census, and that would be sufficient. But because of the growth we've had, particularly the growth to the west, it's just, I just don't think it's responsible for us to not have the representation be even for such a long time, waiting for a census. So I find that it's absolutely appropriate to do it now. When I look at these options, the important thing, I think, about, or the most, it leads me to favor option number one to be the way to do this for the reason that the most recognizable geographical boundaries that we have in our city, that those stay maintained. Obviously, three districts have to grow and one has to shrink, but this option gives us the least amount of moving around other than District Four getting smaller, which is, of course, the, the whole reason for needing to do this. So for me, I, I would suggest that we, that we make this change and that we do it by adopting option number one. I, I would just want to make sure if anybody else wants to make a comment, they do, and I would be happy to make a motion as soon as anybody who's made comments would like to.
Okay, Ms. Miller?
I would just like to agree with Councilmember Marriott that we are, you know, we took a long look at this and the timing, and it absolutely is. a long look at this and the timing, and it absolutely is responsible of us to do it now, and I also agree that option number one is, is the way to go.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I would agree also that option one is the, is the appropriate, appropriate selection, given the three that we've been presented.
Right. Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'd agree as well. I just like the geographical lines. It's been always difficult to explain folks their districts, and this is actually giving some clarity around where those geographical lines are compared to what it used to be. So I'll support number one as well.
Okay, Mr. Marriott.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion. I move that Council Bill 19-010, an ordinance amending Section 30-4 of the Arvada City Code pertaining to council districts, and moving to accept option number one, be approved on final reading numbered 4681 and published by title only.
Yeah, I'm gonna support the motion as well, and I think that it does make sense in terms of, of using more geographic lines to divide these up, and I appreciate the work that Kristin Rush has put into this and our legal staff and the entire team to, to look at where is the appropriate places to draw these lines. For three of us up here, this is fairly irrelevant as, as at-large representatives, but we do recognize the importance of keeping balance between the four districts, and certainly we are very much out of balance right now. So I think this is an appropriate way to go.
Ms. Ford.
Well, I'd like to agree that I, I do believe that we should change due to the difference in numbers, and I would just like to say that to my current constituents who are south of 80th and east of Wattsworth, that I'll miss having you as my constituents, but I'll look forward to the new ones.
That's me. I'm one of them.
And of course, we've always had the attitude that all seven of us represent the entire city, so with that.
Of course.
Right. So that passes six to zero with Mr. McGough being absent. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Wendy's at Candela's Preliminary Development Plan 14857 Candela's Parkway. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Planning Manager Rob Smetana will take us through this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The applicant on this first item is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan to allow for the construction of a new Wendy's restaurant with drive-through, with a drive-through component. The site is located near the northwest corner of Indiana and Candela's Parkway. The building would be approximately 2,800 square feet in size and located on a 1.07 acre lot within the King Super Shopping Center. The preliminary development plan request complies with all of the standards of the land development code, and no modifications are requested with this proposal. Staff does recommend approval of the project based upon the approval criteria found in the land development code, and the required, requested preliminary development plan complies with all of the criteria. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary development plan at their February 19 meeting. We have received the posting, log, and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is present for a presentation and questions, and we also have Jeremiah Bebo from our staff available for questions as well.
Very good. The posting, log, and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anybody that wishes to testify on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're gonna give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Very good. So if I could have Representative the applicant come down and make their presentation?
Greetings.
If you'll state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jonathan Power. I live at 5,800 East Princeton in Englewood. Thank you for letting us present this evening. I'm part of the development team. Make this quick and sweet, but I wanna point out three things. Number one is that Wendy's, the owner of this Wendy's will be, is a local. Not only does he live in Arvada, but he lives in Candela's, which I think is important. He's gonna be a local owner serving friends and neighbors, which is really unique. Secondly, as staff pointed out, we are not asking for any variances whatsoever. I like to call it, this is a five iron up the middle, so.
I don't know, I've never hit one like that, so.
You gotta keep these things entertaining, so. And then also, I want you to think about, this is a new prototype for Wendy's. So I know that you've seen a lot of older versions. This is a brand-new prototype that's new to Colorado, and it will not look like anything that you've seen. It's gonna be stunning. So, for example, it doesn't have a front counter. There'll be people walking around with iPads. It'll, it'll feel like a, more of a restaurant. And so for more on that, the architect will give you the details. Thank you.
Great.
All right, so we do have some images. So, I'm sorry, Greg Masick with Tap Associates at 56 Edwards, Colorado. So it is a, it's called what they call a wide lane, so it's a double drive-through with the, you've got appropriate number of parking, as well as the trash enclosure, and there is a patio on the, kind of the northwest corner. And I can, this is some prototype images, so I think there's only a few buildings that have been built to this prototype in the country. And I can sure give you more detail as, if you'd like, otherwise I'm just gonna make this brief. This is some interior images. As Jonathan was saying, there's no front counter. You kinda walk in the front door and you order at a, at a kiosk, and then you wait for your food and pick it up, so. The colors are, as part of the package, and that was also shown in the exterior images. It is a metal-clad building that's different, basically Wendy's standard colors. Wood image type, looks like wood, metal siding. And that's pretty much it. So we're just here to answer any questions and.
Very good.
More detail.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, and because we had no additional comments, we don't need any rebuttal, but I will certainly open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer, you're first.
I do have a question for the developer.
Okay.
Do they wanna come back?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't get to sit in the back of the room. Come on.
Stay up front.
That's where I was in school, so, you know.
So, so could you just kinda explain how your drive-through works? I'm just curious. I can't find it now.
It's a Y-drive-through, so if you've been to a, I'm sorry.
But I mean.
These are more and more common, so you have two ordering stations, and it funnels into one, one window.
So the egress and ingress, it looks like they come in through the bottom left-hand corner, it's one entrance, and then they have to drive all the way around to get into the queue? Is that how that would work? Or do they just zip in there and cut in and, doesn't matter?
It's, you're probably gonna come in on the, while it's.
That's a one-way only up there.
So it's gonna be a one-way and come in on the north side there, I guess?
So you do have to go a full lap around? No, you can't come in that way. It's exit-only. So there's only one ingress. What I'm fearing is queuing back up onto that main road to get into the King Supers. So if I come straight in and I zip in here and I create a queue of three or four cars, I block the only ingress in. So is that gonna be a problem? How are you gonna deal with that? Do you see what I'm saying? They come into the ingress and they go straight to the outer island?
Without seeing what you're pointing at, it's tough. I can see.
You want me to stand?
Sure.
So your ingress is here, right? Only ingress, right? Ingress. And I can right here and try to order, and you get queuing out to King Supers. What mitigation are you doing to, to prevent queuing and, and issues that bleed on into the, into the King Supers gas station and store?
Well, the queuing lane should actually be next to the, it should wrap the building, correct? So the queuing isn't, should not happen in the, in the.
But I'm human. I'm not gonna go and drive around the building. I'm gonna zip right here out to the outer island and try to order, and then the next person behind me's gonna copy me, and the next person behind me's gonna copy that, and then, then you have three cars and you've just blocked the only ingress into the restaurant.
Well, one, it'll be well-signed, so I, I understand your concern.
Are you putting a curb or anything, or?
There is gonna be obviously signage, I mean, there is a representative from Striping that will, I'm not concerned about it. I think it'll be obvious when you're there. The queuing will go around the building, and people aren't gonna try to cut, so to speak, and if you drive around the building, loop around, then you can get in the queue.
First rodeo. I don't, you know, we have explored other fast-food restaurants that have come in to do similar things, and we hear the same story, and then when reality hits, everything I guessed, I said here, happens at that restaurant. So is there any mitigation you think you can do to prevent that ingress from being clogged up? Do you think Striping will stop?
Signage, Striping, and just in general, the, you know, people will learn the way it works. Keep, keep in mind that the operator here has, is involved in 70-some restaurants. There's quite a bit of experience, and.
Well, if you had your ingress maybe up on the other side, but right there shows a little bit different, so I'll take any, any, any feedback, I mean. You only have one way in.
I like what Jonathan said.
Your, your name, sir?
Jason Graber, and I'm with the franchisee. We have 66 restaurants spread across four states, so this isn't new to us either. If we have some kind of a problem like that, and I tell you, this layout is not unusual in all of our restaurants, where you have to go around the building. I'll give you an example of one thing that we could do. In Timneth, we have, we just opened a few weeks ago, we have something similar to this. We just put out some simple orange cones to sorta teach the people in the first few weeks of how the traffic goes.
So they can't just cut, because they'll clog that ingress. My fear is.
And we had that exact issue. They were cutting and people were road raging because of it.
Yeah, we don't want that.
And so we just put out some simple orange cones to block off, so you couldn't get in, and we believe that it will be a temporary issue, a temporary fix, because it's a new site, and once people realize the direction you go and how you get in, they learn. I mean, it's, you know, it's rare that you have somebody who's a first-time visitor. You know, a lot of our restaurants are many years old, and first-time visitors only happen when you first open.
Okay. Yeah, I just have reservations on that part.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. If I could reserve the motion.
You may.
I had a similar question, and I, I've seen this happen, I totally get it, and, and what I've seen is exactly what this gentleman, and they were not just cones, they were more permanent, kind of the floppy kind of ones that stick to the ground, and that seemed to solve the problem. My question was really more around the pedestrian safety as it, as it comes around from the, the handicap parking. And I, I know that, you know, most people are going slow, but sometimes you have people that speed through there, or go faster, I should say, than others. Is there anything that can be put down that would help to slow traffic without creating an issue with snow removal and things like that? I don't, I don't know, I'm not in the restaurant business, and I don't know what you've seen or done in the past, or if there's any safety or pedestrian issues with those crossings.
I mean, there's certainly things you can do. Obviously, speed bumps and things are a problem for snow plowing and, and emergency egress and such, so what I can tell you is this complies with all the development code that's available, and the parking and, and some of the things that, you know, it's one-way, so it's, it's not gonna be as complicated as it could be. So I don't, I'm not concerned, as concerned about the speed, I guess.
Well, and I guess, and now that I'm, I'm looking at it a little bit closer too, there's also, there appears to be a sidewalk that kinda comes from the drive-window. Is that a sidewalk? Because I've seen in, not obviously in this situation, but I've seen where the, the view, so someone that comes to the edge of the sidewalk, there's, you know, they don't look to the driveline, and so, you know, maybe signage or something that says, "Look right", you know, "Watch for cars", I don't know. I, I just, I've seen a couple of close calls and.
I'm not sure where you're exactly looking at, but we put up safety rails outside each entry door to keep people from walking directly out into traffic, force you to go out.
Okay. And that makes sense, so thank you very much. That's all.
Okay, there are no other questions. Mr. Jones, you've reserved the motion.
Thank you. I move that Wendy's at Candela's Primary Development Plan, Development Plan located at 14857 Candela's Parkway, be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make a comment on the motion, now that the motion's on the floor. I wanted to make a couple of comments. One, I wanna compliment the developer for bringing forth a development like this. It doesn't require any exceptions to our code, that fits into the space. I think it's exactly what we wanna see, and, and thank you for, for doing that. I also wanna compliment our staff for, as we've gone through the broad process of, of this area being developed, down to now the parcel-by-parcel development of it, of creating a system where these developers can bring forth developments that don't require any exceptions. I think this shows a good example of, of this being well-thought-out and well-executed, and I think, you know, staff, you guys have had a, had a big hand in that, and appreciate that happening that way. I think that it's better for, for certainly all of us, and especially the residents of Arvada. And then, you know, I wanna compliment the franchise owner for, for, one, being willing to invest and locate out here in our community. You know, this part of town is, is a place that needs goods and services and, and are starting to be provided, and you're on the forefront of doing that, so thank you for doing that. And also for bringing forth, you know, a, a new latest concept and design for a fast-food restaurant out in this area. I think it's gonna fit really well, and, and you're gonna find great success here, so thank you. And because of all those reasons, I will certainly be voting yes on this motion.
Good, all votes cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. McGough being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Mountain Gateway Industrial Preliminary Development Plan generally located at southwest corner of Robb Street and Ridge Road. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, Planning Manager Rob Smetana will start us off on this item.
Thank you again. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary development plan to allow for the construction of two light industrial warehouse flex buildings totaling approximately 142,000 square feet. The site is located southwest of Ridge Road and Robb Street. The buildings will be located on an approximately 12-acre parcel and within 1/4 mile of the G Line Ward Road Station. The applicant is requesting two modifications from the land development code for this project, a 2.8% reduction in the amount of open space to be provided, and to allow for the use of tilt-up concrete panels rather than masonry panels on the front, on the, excuse me, of the building. Staff does, does support the proposed modifications. Staff does therefore recommend approval of the project based upon the criteria found in the land development code, and as the preliminary development plan complies with all of the code requirements. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the project at their February 19 meeting. We have received the signed posting, log, and mailing affidavit, and they are in order, and the applicant's team is in attendance to present questions, to present and answer questions. Thank you.
Very good. The posting, log, and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anybody that wishes to testify on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're gonna give, and these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Very good. You may proceed with your presentation.
Hi, I'm Walter Cale, an applicant, and this is our architect, Ken Harshman, and we are going to go through. I'm gonna have the architect go through the design with you.
Good.
We'll keep it fairly brief. Staff has done a.
Staff has done an excellent job in their summary, and planning commission has, as you mentioned, voiced their full support, so we'll move through it fairly quickly to give you an idea of what...
And your name for the record, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ken Harshman with Gray Wolf Architecture, fifteen forty-three Champa Street. See if I can work this. Get my six-year-old grandson to do it.
I think there's some instructions underneath your paperwork there if you...
All right, got it. Left, right, here we go. Uh, we'll move through most of these early, uh, slides just to, because they're really indicating the consistency with, uh, zoning and, and planning, um, components within the project, and skip directly to the site plan. You can see the site consists of two buildings, uh, one of them slightly larger than the other on the east side of the property. Uh, they have been designed with some significant breaks in the building facades, uh, which add both to the, the scale of the building, breaking it down into smaller components, um, but also providing within the triangular spaces that you see, uh, some significant outdoor, uh, amenity spaces for the, for the tenants as they come into the project. Building on the west side, uh, has a fairly large landscape area as well. You can see kind of a, a pie-shaped space, uh, along the west side of that building, uh, that provides a significant amount of landscaping for those tenants as well. The, one of the areas that we wanted to focus on, and this was something that was, was, uh, open for discussion, is the southern entry, which is going to be designated as the primary truck entrance. Uh, we have requested a, an entry which is wider than what the city engineers are, um, considering at this time, and this diagram explains why we want to have this. This diagram indicates that trucks moving from the north, entering into the southern access point, do not cross into oncoming traffic either in, on Robb Street or in the entry drive. Trucks exiting the property, same situation. They do not have to cross into oncoming traffic in order to be able to, to make this maneuver. This is the plan that the engineering department has recommended. The blue zones are the reduced width of the driveway. You can see what happens in, in the normal path of vehicles exiting, they would be crossing over significantly, and the only way to avoid crossing those spaces, I don't know if I have the diagram or not. I don't know if you can...
Yeah, there's a, on the table here. If you put it down, we can turn on the overhead.
Okay. All right. It's a little bit hard to see, but... This is what happens from the northbound traffic comes in, has to swing into the oncoming lane in order to be able to make this turn, coming around back into the property. So, southbound trucks swing into oncoming traffic, then move in. Exiting traffic, the same thing. They have to move into the oncoming traffic entering the site, and oncoming traffic on Robb Street. So twice, they are moving into oncoming traffic. So what, what has to happen is they, they have to plan ahead in their exit. So if there's traffic moving down Robb Street, they may be sitting in the wrong side of that driveway while they're waiting to exit, which will create an issue for somebody who's trying to enter the property because there's another vehicle waiting to get out. What we would like to see, I mean, our first choice would be obviously the first one, um, and that's kind of where we'd like to open the discussions. Uh, we do have some other alternates that we've been taking a look at that are somewhere halfway in between. One of the other concerns that was mentioned, uh, by staff was the distance that pedestrians would need to walk on the wider, uh, the wider traffic driveway. It's a distance of a hundred feet. So to put that in perspective, it's like crossing Wadsworth over on Ralston. That's what it would be, that's the distance is crossing Wadsworth.
Our original application requested a throat of about sixty feet, radius of about sixty-five feet. Uh, staff requested thirty-five-foot throat and a thirty-foot radius. Uh, we're hoping to get it to a forty-eight-foot throat and a forty-five-foot radius. We think that that can kind of help mitigate some of the issues. We're worried about the trailer of a truck kicking up a curb, and because we are close to a station and we do have the, uh, sidewalk come down, sorry, excuse me, along this part of Robb Street, uh, what we don't want to see is the back of a trailer. Uh, if a car is exiting, that, uh, as a car comes in, it cuts the, the turn short, and the back of a trailer kicks up off the side of a curb and could potentially, uh, get a pedestrian. So, uh, just as a developer, we just want to voice, uh, our concern and, uh, our disagreement with the staff's request for a thirty-five-foot throat and a thirty-foot radius, and that hopefully we can come to something that is, uh, in our, in our view, in our civil engineer's view, a safer alternative.
All right, so we'll kind of table that, and then we can keep going back to, to the architecture, to the two points that they described. Um, these were just some slides illustrating other examples of similar-sized driveway widths, um, that do exist within the city of Arvada today, both retail establishments and, um, other existing industrial, uh, establishments that have very similar wide points of entry, uh, into their facilities. This one is, is an older facility, but again, it, it's something that we want to... So on the architecture, uh, as was mentioned, we're requesting, uh, the use of tilt-up concrete. It would be painted. Uh, you can see from the exterior that we're, we've, uh, introduced multiple colors and tones, there's textures, um, really developing a lot of relief and color, uh, within this particular building design. There's a lot of glass facing Robb Street, uh, and then on the west, a very similar, uh, this is actually the west elevation of the west building. This is the east building. Uh, you can see the stair stepping of the building, uh, within each of those, those corners, uh, inside the interior building, uh, there are some pedestrian gazebos and, and other components that provide outdoor activity spaces. So that would be our presentation. We're open for questions.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this item? Yes, ma'am. And were you previously sworn in on this?
No.
Okay, if you'll raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Mostly opinion, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. I've been here before, Christine Emanuel, ninety-six-hundred West Fifty-Fourth Avenue. I happen to own a business that is very close.
If you'll direct your comments to us.
Sorry, sorry. I happen to own a business that's on, um, Parfet, Parfay Street, that is, uh, and within walking distance from that area, and, um, I have to tell you that the first thing that, uh, jumped out at me was the trailers and tractors, or the trucks, coming back and forth, because if you guys haven't been on Robb Street lately, you should go, because it's a very narrow street, and there is a light there that crosses the, uh, not-yet-running light rail, and, um, across Ridge Road from Robb is a pasture. So I have to wonder how these very large trucks with trailers that can hopefully easily access a beautiful paved parking lot can also get on to Ridge Road and off of Ridge Road, crossing the light rail, and it's only a single lane, there is no sidewalk there. So again, we couldn't really have, uh, light rail takers go from the Ward Road Station to this building because there's no sidewalk also. Um, so that's my first concern. Also, if we do have continuous, uh, testing of the trains and the freight trains that come by there all the time, um, I wonder how much these trucks, whatever your tenants are doing, is going to block the traffic that's already there, and if it's not a possibility, um, to get them from going, I'm wondering if Mr. Knight or somebody else from Public Works can talk with me about, um, or the Streets Department about getting, um, a weight limit on trucks that go up and down Ridge Road, because it can be very congestive, especially during the rush hour, um, periods up and down that street with Miller and the new apartment buildings on, right above Kipling on Ridge Road, because traffic's just going to increase, and if there's more trucks with trailers, no matter how big the entrance is to the parking lot, we still have to address the current road situation, and it's mostly rural right there. It's kind of an odd place. So I would highly encourage you guys to check it out in person and see logistically, like, aside from their parking lot, how can you manage to get trucks with trailers, et cetera, up and down that road and not cause headaches to the people who live there and work there already? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public like to address City Council? See, now I'll close that public comment portion and ask the developer to come back up, uh, respond to, uh, those points that were made, and then we'll have some other questions and, uh, address those as well.
Yeah, we'll go back. Um, as of right now, Rob, uh, this actually touches on another part of one of the two, uh, exceptions we're asking for, which is the, uh, open space. Uh, our open space currently is twenty-eight percent of the, you can see up here, land area. It's twenty-eight percent of the existing lot. We're actually, uh, the new lot, once we dedicate over the land for the retention of the new Robb Street, which will be upgraded to a collector's street, uh, that's part of the agreement, so that the street will be improved for trucks. We're actually, so we're at, uh, twenty-two percent on the pre-dedication, uh, percentage. Post-dedication, we're twenty-eight percent. The, the city requirements are twenty-five percent, so we like to think that we're, might be a little over, but, uh, relative to what the original land area was, we're actually under. Um, and yeah, so we're improving, uh, we are moving, Rob. Uh, we're lessening the radius, you can see at the bottom right-hand side where it says, uh, detention pond, the deeded pond, that's actually where Robb is right now. So it swings out, we're tightening it so it's safer for trucks to pass through.
And is it actually being widened some?
It, it is being widened, and I, I wanted to point out to you, yes. If you can see the edge of the green, that's the current alignment of Robb, and you're right, it's, it's a private road right now. Um, and so it will be widened to, uh, to the width of a collector's street, and there's a sidewalk that's going to be built on the west side, so there'll be a sidewalk that connects, and as part of this, we are required to create a pedestrian crossing as part of the improvements to the RTD light rail crossing, so it'll be similar to other RTD crossings, you know, farther down, farther to the east, where you have, there's a special pedestrian gate, um, that allows people to be able to go across the tracks, um, safely. So it, it will be integrated as, as part of the pedestrian system that is currently, does not exist, you know, from Fiftieth heading up to the north, so that, that is part of the project.
Right.
The crossing is widened.
Right.
The crossing itself is also widened.
Right. Uh, Ms. Ford, you're first.
So, I have a couple of questions. Don't walk away. So, um, the trucks will enter where it says truck entry, and they'll go in between the buildings, correct?
Correct.
And then they'll go out the, where it says, uh, building one, and the entry up at the...
No, they enter and leave from the same location on the south portion of the property.
Oh, they do. So, um, how do they turn around, then?
It's a two-hundred-foot-wide center area, you have the center, and that's sufficient enough for them to be able to turn around. So they'll come in, they pull into their loading space, coming in from the south, and then as they pull back out, they can make that turn in, in essentially reverse direction.
So when they go into the, um, either building one or two, they'll be parking, uh, perpendicular to the buildings then?
Correct, that is correct.
And, um, and then I had a question for, uh, Rob. Um, I noticed in the, um, staff report that it talked about, uh, the Yocum Ditch, uh, company, and that their, the relocation of the ditch had to be finalized at the time of the FDP. Is it safe to assume that they're working on this already and that they're in agreement with this?
Yes, that's correct. Usually they want the plan, the final construction plans to line up together, so it makes sense to get all the final plans at the final development plan stage.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jones, you're next.
Thank you. How many trucks per day? I know, is it, I'm guessing it's probably not occupied yet, but any idea?
Uh, we have the traffic report that's been completed. I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get that, you back on that, get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. And then, I actually, when I was looking at the drawing, um, I thought it was ingenious, the, the wider, uh, entrance and exit, um, because you see that all the time where trucks are running over the sidewalk or running over the grass, and, and there's always landscape damage. So I thought that was actually, uh, a, a great idea. My concern really was, as the trucks were exiting onto Ridge Road, um, is there enough room for them to make a right-hand turn onto Ridge Road and not go into oncoming traffic? That feels, and again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but that feels tight, um, and maybe staff can address that.
Jenny Wolf slog, development, um, engineering manager. Uh, we did analyze, uh, the truck movement, movements, both in and out of the site and adjacent to the property here. Uh, we would expect the trucks that are headed northbound on Robb, turning to the right onto Ridge Road, to behave similarly to the trucks that would be exiting the site. So we would expect them to kind of swing wide and use, use the available pavement to make those turns.
So, getting to the concern of traffic on Ridge Road and it having more traffic, what problems does that create for stacking on Robb Road and/or issues with, if that truck is waiting and pulls up into the, over the, the tracks and the gates want to come down?
Um... We looked at, uh, all those alternatives, and, um, we are doing an intersection analysis here and, and part of this development. Um, there will be some improvements to that intersection so that there will be no, um, backup onto the railroad tracks, and, um, looking at the flow of traffic along Ridge Road as well, so that traffic is not impeded in that area.
So when will that be done?
It's being done as part of this final development plan.
Okay. Okay, I think those are my only questions.
There will be crossing arms on both sides of the train tracks.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know, my concern is that a truck anticipating the traffic pulls up and sits on those tracks thinking that there's, they're going to have enough time, and all of a sudden the warning lights come on, and, and the signs want to come down. That's my concern, is, uh, impeding the trains.
So it will be a signalized intersection.
Will the signal be, uh, on the south side of the tracks?
Yes, the stop bar is on the south side of the, the tracks. So traffic headed north on Robb would stop before it gets to the tracks.
Right, but, um, and maybe this is, this is going to be bad on me, but I tend to, when I get to a, a right-hand turn, watching traffic inch forward, uh, and I'm assuming that these trucks are anticipating traffic and inching forward. Again, if they're in the way of those guards coming down, that's, I guess that's my, that's my concern, is that, you know, there's nothing to prevent them from clogging up that intersection.
So as part of the intersection analysis, we would analyze a no right turn on red that would prevent that from occurring.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Maria.
Thank you. Quick question, uh, going back to the truck entry, and you showed on this picture, seems like the, the, one of the difficulties you have with that truck in, entry and the needing for it to be wider is because that's kind of an acute angle there, particularly if you're coming up from the, from the south to the north and, and a truck making that turn, or, or the other way, and that, if that, could that front building just either back up a little bit or just be slightly smaller to straighten that angle out enough to take away that need for that? I mean, have you considered that as, you know, you're, obviously are considering the, asking for a, a bigger driveway to be able to make that, those movements happen, but is that also a possible consideration to just reduce the, the, how far south that building goes by either moving it or by making it... goes by either moving it or by making it slightly smaller to kind of accomplish the same thing?
I guess I'm not sure that shortening the building would, would, I mean, it is, you're right, it's a difficult alignment because you want to enter perpendicular to Rob Street. And so, yeah, the driveway takes kind of an S-turn in there, and as a result, there is some of the action that you described. I'm not sure shortening the building would soften that or not. I mean, it might make it more 90 degrees, but I don't know if it would, would help the situation that we're describing.
Okay, so you haven't really looked at it. I mean, it just seems to me as a, that that would have been one possible approach. Let me ask you another question. The, one of the exceptions you're asking for is to be able to build this as tilt-up concrete buildings. Could you just expand on that a little bit more about why you want to do that rather than, you know, a masonry front or, you know, something that we normally see?
Well, I think there's a couple of reasons. One is the, the height of the buildings is such that when you're talking about buildings that are 32 feet high, masonry gets to be extremely expensive in order to be able to, to build as a, as a primary construction component. So in order for these, and I know Walter could speak to it a lot more than I can, relative to the economics of this type of project, in order to be able to make the numbers work, masonry and brick are not items that tend to fall within, you know, the realm of the construction that, that makes sense within the performer.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer.
I want to go back to the intersection question. I'm struggling with that intersection. Knowing Rob Street and living there and driving Ridge Road all the time, what I'm envisioning when, when Mr. Jones was, was talking about that intersection is, green light, northbound, truck needs to go left or right, doesn't matter. And the cross traffic is at red, probably over the white line if there's one there. And this trucker's going to have to swing out on that pavement, and then they're going to be nose to nose to the car that's sitting there. Meanwhile, the trailer is sitting out on the, the train tracks. How do we, how do we address that?
Mayor, City Council, my name's Tom Shaw, traffic engineer at Development Engineering View. I'm not familiar with the project, and I haven't had the pleasure of working with the development review team at this time. But one thing that they could do is try to optimize in how they look at how the trucks exit the site. For instance, as we move forward with designing and reviewing this intersection of Rob and Ridge Road, one thing that could be done is extending the left turn phase in that protected phase for that intersection, giving the trucks moving from northbound Rob onto westbound Ridge a longer time to cross the track safely without having to worry about opposing through movements obstructing them. So that that way they could get entirely across the tracks, if that makes any sense.
Well, assuming that there's a car there and he can't turn because that car is in the way. That, that's what I guess the fear is, because it's so narrow. And just one point of clarification, too, remember, the development on the north side of Ridge Road is, is responsible for widening the road for their development. But now we have a use that's popped into that intersection that has caused, because we only look at two through lanes and one center lane, if I remember correctly, right?
Correct. So we, the development that's coming into the north is analyzing the intersection, assuming that this development goes forward and accounting for the traffic with this development in it as well. And to answer your question about cars stacked in the turn lane from west Ridge Road onto Rob Road, I think when we do the signalization plans and timing of the signal for that intersection, what, one thing that we can look at is like a left turn arrow right before the, the northbound Rob changes.
To clear it out.
To clear that out before the trucks need to make that turn.
Okay, just long as we're thoughtful about that, you know, this area's been real sensitive around traffic issues. And then, but do you really, do you really believe your truckers are going to go on Ridge Road? Because where would they go? The freeway's the other direction. They would go probably south on Rob most of the time, right? Because they're going to hit the freeway.
And they can hit the freeway from either, either Ridge or heading south down to the front Ridge Road.
You have to take Ridge West.
Yes.
To a right turn only intersection.
To Ward.
Ward to right only. You can't turn left. And so then you have to go 52nd to our friends of my neighbors, which are, you know, Rainbow Ridge. Do we need to revisit where we're, you know, everyone knows, they've been around long enough to know that now we got truckers showing up at Ri, Rainbow Ridge. Oh goodness. Let's be thoughtful through this because we've had too many conversations about, you know, that. So maybe, I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is, because I just looked at Wheat Ridge as part, and it's pretty narrow down, down that way. So I don't know what our IGA is saying with them. But, but this is now going to be a public road?
Yes. Yes, it is. And staff has had meetings with Wheat Ridge regarding all the developments in this area. And we will continue to work with both the intersection at Ridge and Wes, and Wheat Ridge to the south.
Okay, and we don't know how many trucker, or trucks this will be a day?
We have a traffic study that's in the report. I don't know the numbers off my head, but it is, it is in the report.
I must not have seen it. Yeah, are we just solving for five or are we solving for 100?
It's not 100.
Okay.
It's a minimal amount of trucks.
Okay.
So I'll ask a question of our team. With regard to this proposal for a wider entryway, what's, what's staff's reaction to that? Why, why do you prefer the narrower versus the wider?
Our city standards recommend a 30-foot throat width for industrial uses when they intersect a street. So we have worked with the applicant to come to an agreement where we will allow 35-foot throat width in this case, due to several circumstances, sort of that S-shaped entrance that was previously discussed, as well as the width of Rob, of Rob Street. We feel a 35-foot throat with 30-foot turning radiuses is adequate for any truck to make that turning movement. We understand that they will swing wide into opposing traffic. We are assuming and based on the analysis in the traffic report that most of the trucks will head south out of the site and be coming from the south into the site as well. So when we analyzed that, based on the number of trucks per day, which is all included in the traffic report, we felt that it was absolutely within standard practice to swing wide into, into oncoming traffic as need be. Based upon that, the speed on Rob and the, you know, uses on the site, we felt that 35-foot was adequate in this case. That's consistent, it's within five feet of our typical standards and consistent with other jurisdictions in the area.
Are there any negatives of being wider?
There are negatives of it being wider. One of those is pedestrian safety. In this area, there will only be a sidewalk on the west side of Rob Street, and so pedestrians will be forced to walk across this drive access. And by not giving pedestrians any sort of refuge in the middle, it puts pedestrians at a safety issue. So we feel that a narrower throat width is more appropriate than widening it any further.
Okay. Would you like to respond to that?
Well, the sidewalk south of 50th is on the east side of Rob. So people are going to have to cross Rob Street. Probably they'll go diagonally because they'll cross right from the intersection of Rob and 50th. So they're going to cut diagonally across Rob Street to get to this sidewalk, which is probably an equivalent distance.
But our, our original request at 65-foot put about 100-foot walking distance north to south. Their request put it at about 60 feet. The number that we came up with is approximately 81 feet. So we're trying to shorten the walking distance, but we're also trying to make it safer for trucks and pedestrians and, and cars also traveling north and south on Rob.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just talked to our staff during the presentation. This information was not brought to our attention prior to this hearing. It was not really discussed at the Planning Commission. If the applicant wants to continue this discussion, I don't believe it's appropriate to continue it during this hearing in front of the City Council. I would recommend that we continue this hearing to a future date. We sit down with the applicant, we hash all this out like we should have been doing before this meeting, and then come back with a recommendation that reflects both the applicant and staff's position.
So, so you want to go 60 feet? I know, I hear you. We'll come back to you. But I just don't want to waste anyone's time. If we're going to delay this two, three, four, five weeks or whatever, it, yeah, it's just, 60, 60 feet are like two city roads. It, I can't see why it's that wide.
Their, their, the, the city's request, the city's proposal was about 60 feet of walking distance across from curb to curb.
I'm sorry, the city's request?
We're dealing with throat and radii, which are a little different than the actual distance that a, that a pedestrian walks.
So what's the true width then from?
That's the 60 feet of what a pedestrian's walking.
Say from a sidewalk to sidewalk?
Yes, of what an actual pedestrian walks. And then the numbers we're talking about with the radii and the throat, that's actually, that's traffic engineering. That's, that's reference for traffic engineers and trucks moving. So they're a little bit different.
That's new for us. That I try to bring engineers up here once in a while.
Yeah, I guess, I guess where I'm struggling from, after hearing from Mr. Devon, is that you're making a new request, what I'm perceiving is a new request to us that was not part of your submittal for what we're supposed to be approving tonight, that you've thrown something new into the equation.
What, what was asked at Planning Commission was that we work with staff to try and come up with a resolution. And we're still willing to do that. So it was passed on the condition that would we continue to work with engineering and come up with a resolution. What we came up with today was a compromise that, yes, it had not been presented previously. It was something that, that our engineers have been working through. But we're willing to take the same position to where it's like, it's a conditional approval. We continue to work with staff, with engineering to come up with a workable solution.
Okay. Council, what action would you like to take? Okay. Mr. Marriott.
I'm not ready to make a motion yet, but I guess I would, I would, after hearing what City Manager said and, and what the applicant said, I, I would lean towards giving the applicant the choice of us considering the proposal that's before us or continuing it until a later date and giving you time to work with the staff, like the City Manager said. But if you have a preference between those two approaches, I guess I would like to hear that before we do anything.
I guess I'm not clear on what the, what the motion would be.
Well, so, so we have before us a, a proposal that's the, the staff's recommendation for the width of the driveway. And we can consider that for you here tonight if, if you're willing to accept that. If that doesn't work for you, I would suggest that what you might want to do is continue the approval of this, to have time to work with the staff to come up with something that, that, that works, or at least that gets vetted before we get to look at it. I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I don't feel like I'm prepared up here to be able to adequately assess your request for a wider driveway at this point and just make that decision from the hip without some background. So if you really, really want the wider driveway, I think we need to continue this hearing to a later date to give you time to work with the staff about that issue of the wider driveway. And then this hearing can come back to us for approval or not approval. The other option for you is that the, the, the case that we have before us, that our staff has presented to us and you have, is for this 35-foot wide driveway. If that works for you, even though maybe it's not all, maybe it's not all you want, and you'd rather finish this hearing tonight, we can look at it based on that. And that, that those would be the two choices I would feel much more comfortable deciding on.
I think we'd rather work with the city and come to something that hopefully we can both agree to. So maybe pull.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. So I'd like to make, like to make a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask a quick question of staff? So where I'm confused is in this packet that I have, it has that drawing. And that's, when I looked at the drawing, that's when I said, wow, that's ingenious. I didn't know it was an issue. But it's in the drawings that I had and reviewed.
So it was shown in the drawings that you have and reviewed. The first condition of the Planning Commission recommendations is that the applicant addressed all remaining issues identified by staff throughout the PDP process. And one of our issues that we identified through that PDP process was that we would not approve a throat width wider than 35 foot with 30-foot radii. So that is an issue that was outstanding with staff that they had not yet resolved, even though it was shown on those drawings.
And so when I look at these drawings, I'm assuming that staff has signed off on that.
The conditions of approval, I think, is what Jenny's referring to. And, and that is an attachment to this, to this packet.
Right. And I read that. But again, I, I guess I assumed that that conversation had happened and that because this was given to us in this format, that that's what staff had discussed.
So it, it was a disagreement that we, you know, the, two sides could not come to a conclusion on that.
Why was this included then?
Well, one of the, the third condition is that, that the drawings be revised to reflect staff's recommendation. So the plans, the plans that are presented are the plans the applicant would like to go forward with. Staff made a recommendation that we reduce the width. So that's what came before the Planning Commission. They, in particular in their motion to recommend, went with staff's opinion on that. And then that same decision is, is before you tonight as well.
Okay.
Mr. Pfeifer.
So the notes from the hearing on the 19th, there was a lot of conversation on this. So I don't understand, you had Sylvia Lopo, she's staff?
She is staff.
So she brought up the applicants requesting 50 foot to the Planning Commission. She explained that. She said staff felt that was being allowed was more than adequate for the 35 feet. You know, Mr. Hannon from the Planning Commission was asking about it. So was Mr. McCarron, and so was Mr. Griffith. They all asked about this.
They did.
The three Planning Commissioners asked about this. And so how did we have a full-blown conversation? And then how did we get here tonight and staff was not aware of it?
We had a conversation at the Planning Commission hearing. After the Planning Commission hearing, we really haven't heard much from the applicant. The applicant, at one point, reached out and asked to meet with me to talk about that. I said, not a problem, we'll be happy to talk, especially if you have some new information to provide. Staff stance is really 35-foot is as wide as we're willing to go unless we have some new information or a change in scenario, or they'd like to present some new information. And they did not reach out to me again. So we, staff felt like the issue was resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Coco. I'm with CKE Engineering. Yes, after the Planning Commission, I did have a conversation with Jenny. And she made it very clear to me that they would not accept anything more than 35-foot throat, a 30-foot radius. She even made the statement that she was going on a limb going out to 35 feet as opposed to 30 feet. That was supposedly in the code. At that point, we had nothing more to talk about at that point. She made it very clear of her position. Now, I do want to ask the question, because it did come in the Planning Commission hearing. You know, a lot of the members of the Planning Commission, they said, you know, we really hope that us as the applicant and staff could work together to find some middle ground, something that would work for both parties. Again, I would certainly like to ask the question to staff, are you willing to have those conversations? Or are you steadfast in 35-foot throat, 30-foot radius? Because we would certainly like to work with staff on this.
I'll answer on behalf of staff. We need to meet with them. And it's not appropriate to have this discussion right here at this hearing. Obviously, there's been miscommunication, misunderstanding. We need to work with them. We would like to bring this back to the council.
And, and the applicant has indicated that they would like to have some additional discussion. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm going to make a motion, and I'm going to move that the Mountain Gateway Industrial Park Preliminary Development Plan located at the southwest corner of Rob Street and Ridge Road be continued till a later date so that staff and the applicant can continue to work together on this driveway issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
City Clerk advises me we should be date-specific on the motion. So I would recommend that we bring this back for the April 15th hearing.
Okay. So I'll add that to my motion to bring this back to the April 15th public hearing.
Good. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. McGough being an excused appearance. Oh, I need to display, you want to see? There. That does pass six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Why don't we take a brief stand in place?
Why don't we take a brief stand in place? Okay, we're ready to reconvene. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on Council Bill 1901-1, An Ordinance Rezoning Certain Land Within the City of Arvada Village at Five Parks, filing six, from City of Arvada PUDBP, Planned Unit Development Business Professional, to PUDBPR, Planned Unit Development Business Professional Residential, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, generally located at the southeast corner of West 86 Parkway and Indiana Street. Same time, we'll consider the Village of Five Parks outlined development plan, Third Amendment, generally located at the southeast corner of West 86 Parkway and Indiana Street, and the Village at Five Parks filing six preliminary development plan, generally located at the southeast corner of West 86 Parkway and Indiana Street. And finally, we'll consider the Village at Five Parks filing six preliminary plat, generally located at the southeast corner of West 86 Parkway and Indiana Street. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Rob Sutana will introduce this item. I believe the applicant is here and will also be making a presentation.
Thank you again. The applicant is requesting approval of all of those items that you described for the development of a mixed-use residential and commercial project. The project is proposed to include 66 paired homes and approximately 21,500 square feet of commercial space on the approximately 13-acre site. The proposed density of the residential is about 13 units per acre. As part of the preliminary development plan, the applicant has proposed modifications to a few items, those being residential setbacks, lot size and width, maximum lot coverage, and a reduced landscape buffer for two of the commercial lots. The modifications requested are necessary to allow for the residential buffer between the proposed commercial along Indiana and the existing single-family residential to the east of the site. Staff supports the proposed modifications. Staff recommends approval of the project based upon the criteria found in the Land Development Code as the request complies with all of the criteria of the various actions in front of you. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of all of the elements of the request at their February 19th meeting. We have received the posting, log, and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance, and John Moore with our staff is also here if you have any questions.
Very good, the posting, log, and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anybody that wishes to testify on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand, swear affirm that the testimony you have given in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Joe Jean, 5690 Webster Street, engineer for the applicant. We won't bore you with a long presentation. Suffice to say that our presentation to the Planning Commission is part of the record. As you've heard, this is a four-part motion for the modification of the outlined development plan, the preliminary development plan, and the preliminary plat, all combined total of four units. This is generally the southeast corner of 86th and Indiana. It's that last remaining piece on the south side of 86th Avenue. As you've heard, we have worked long and hard on this particular project. We do want to compliment staff. It has been an arduous journey to get here. We've been on this for almost approximately three years, had numerous meetings with the neighborhood, worked out a lot of agreements with them. The, and again, the proposal is for a mixed-use project with commercial along the western frontage along the Indiana Street and the 66 paired homes. Developer did mention that while we're on a roll tonight, maybe we'll just go ahead and ask for 80 tonight instead of the 66, but sorry, it was a little joke, but...
Very little, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Very small, right. I'll retract that.
Thank you.
The, as you can see, there are substantial public improvements associated with this project, not the least of which is the east-west Collector Road that connects between Gladiola Street and Indiana. That will be a public roadway to ease access off of 86th Street there so that some of that traffic will go away from that intersection and allows direct access from Indiana to the Village of Five Parks and back and forth, and direct access into the commercial project from the Village of Far Park Homes. So, there are quite a few public improvements associated with this site. And again, we want to compliment staff on the long, arduous task to get here. It has taken quite a while, a lot of work to work out the details. As you can see, the Village of Five Parks to the east fully built out. And as we mentioned, this project does provide a buffer with the paired homes. These are for-sale, mid-level project, product, for-sale homes, excuse me, between the commercial and the existing residential to provide that buffer to the existing single-family homes. Just some architectural of the paired homes. Again, you can see some of the variances. Because they are paired homes, they are on relatively small lots. These are patio-style homes. So, the normal lot configuration doesn't work exactly. So, that's why you see the variances in your packet tonight. But it's, this is a typical paired home project. Again, very typical commercial, neighborhood commercial project, low in scale, low, relatively low-rise, single-story product, just very in keeping with the neighborhood center to providing neighborhood services. With that, again, we're asking for the rezoning, the ODP review, the modifications, the preliminary development plan, and the preliminary plat. We are, there's the site density. We are in compliance. We do agree with all the staff findings, and we will comply with the, with all the requirements under the staff report. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, we ask for your approval.
Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open up for City Council questions or action. Ms. Ford.
I have a couple of questions. In reading the staff report, one of the neighbors was concerned that the Road A might attract fast-moving traffic. And I believe the document said that there would be measures to slow traffic, and I just wanted to ask what those measures might be.
Yes, ma'am. The road is deliberately designed, if you will, in a curvilinear fashion, so it's not a straight shot. Part of that is determined by CDOT is, Indiana Street at that location is Highway 72, and that's CDOT access. So, we are required to comply with their rules. It's a three-quarter intersection of that location. So, you won't, we had to, we had to put that locate, that intersection at the location that they said to, which does then force a curvilinear road in that. And we deliberately designed that so that it was not going to be a high-speed roadway.
Okay, so the curvature.
Right.
Let's see here. And you'll have to pardon me, but I was unsure of what direction commercial was facing. Was it facing out onto Indiana, or was it facing towards the homes?
It's a variety, ma'am. The two, the two products or the two buildings to the southeast or to the southwest corner of the site, right up against the railroad. Those frontages on those buildings, and for example, there's a credit union or a bank or a financial institution that's likely going to be in one of those. The front door of those buildings would face east or towards the homes, okay?
Okay.
And the back would be up against the, up against, but we would do 360-degree architecture in those buildings.
Right.
So, then the commercial buildings further to the north, the one in the top corner is intended to be, we're hoping it's a restaurant facility. We don't have anything signed up yet, but that one would kind of generally face east. There is a fast-food facility in the middle, and then there is a standard gasoline facility that faces to the west. So, it's a variety of functions in there.
Okay, perfect. And then, excuse me, under the landscaping, buffering, and fencing, it said the PDP is meeting all landscaping and buffering and fencing standards with one exception. And it said lots 47 and 48 of Block 3 have a 4.3-foot-deep landscape buffer. And I know that, you know, it says that the trees add, but I was trying to find that. Where is that, the 47 and 48 lots of Block 3?
Ma'am, that's those commercial buildings on the south side that we mentioned about.
Okay.
So, typically, we have a 20-foot setback from a public roadway, a landscape buffer. In this case, it's not a public roadway, it's only a private roadway. So, we're down to a 14-foot landscape buffer in there instead of the, instead of the typical 20 feet. But we've provided extra landscaping within that, and it's not a public roadway. That's just those commercial lots.
Road A we're talking about.
Right, well, it's that, that north-south roadway that goes from Road A down towards the railroad track.
Road D.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Okay.
That should be it.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Actually, Ms. Ford asked all of my questions but one with regard to lighting. I'm assuming that the commercial buildings will conform to the night sky lighting ordinance and their lights...
Yes, sir, most of the buildings will be, that will be downcast, will, things won't go off the site. Again, part of the reason we're doing the paired homes is to buffer all that, all that property from the existing homes. So, they will, they will be fully, the commercial will be fully shielded from the existing homes by the, by the paired homes. But yes, most of the lighting is downcast. Much of it is actually on, just on the buildings as opposed to parking lot lighting.
And then it also with those, with the signage on the buildings, those will follow the same, and I don't know what the ordinance is, but when, if they're, if they close at 10, the lights go off at 10?
Yes, sir.
On the signage on the building.
The full, we're going to comply with every ordinance that we possibly can.
Thank you.
Including signage.
Thank you.
Not that you possibly can, that you will.
Yes, yes, sir. Unless we come back and ask for 80 lots, we're going to do it.
I see no other questions. Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, real quick. Parking.
Do you want to make the motion?
Ah, she's going to get mad. I think this parking actually works out, so, it does. It, but I do have a question about the, there's a statement in the staff report that adds some confusion. But the paired homes on Road D, they look like they have a driveway. Is that driveway usable, or just, it's just how it sets with the house?
I'm sorry, which roadway?
Road D, so the far west paired homes? D isn't David, you know?
The, those all, the driveways are deep enough that they can park in front of the garage.
Oh, they can park in front of the garage, they are, they are long enough.
Yes, that's why we set those back.
Okay, so those, okay.
Yeah, those, those have a standard driveway like you would at your home.
Okay.
As opposed to an alley product.
Okay. If there are any questions, I'll make the motion.
I think Mr. Jones asked to reserve the motion. He was, he was sending hand signals down to me.
Smoke signals. Thank you. So, bear with me, so we're making four motions?
Yes, you are.
All right, I am making four motions. Yeah, let me get to, okay. First, I move that Council Bill 19-011, An Ordinance Rezoning Certain Land Within the City of Arvada, Village of Five Parks, filing six, from City of Arvada PUDBP, Planned Unit Development Business Professional, to PUDBPR, Planned Unit Development Business Professional Residential, and amending the official zoning maps of the City of Arvada, Colorado, generally located at the southeast corner of 86th Parkway and Indiana Street, be approved on final reading numbered 4682 and ordered published by title only. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion's for approval. I'm going to be supporting this motion from the perspective that we've had a lot of discussion out here on the west side in terms of taking property that was previously zoned with more of a commercial use and allowing a portion of it to be developed residentially. And what makes this one more unique for me is, first of all, that they have done a nice use of commercial in terms of right along Indiana. I think that the paired homes is a nice buffer between that commercial use and the existing residential. So, for those reasons, I'll be supporting the motion. That passes six to zero with Mr. McGough being an excused absent.
I move that the Village of Five Parks outlined development plan, Third Amendment, generally located at the southeast corner of West 86th Parkway and Indiana Street, be approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. McGough being absent.
And I move that the Village of Five Parks filing six preliminary development plan, generally located at the southeast corner of 86th Parkway and Indiana Street, be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. And this motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. McGough being absent.
And the final motion that I will, actually, I was going to speak to all four of them at the same time. I move that the Village of Five Parks filing six preliminary plat, generally located at the southeast corner of 86th Parkway and Indiana Street, be approved subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. And this motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission. And I just wanted to echo essentially what, what the mayor said. You know, this, this particular piece of property is difficult. And I, and I think that with the commercial on kind of the Indiana side and rounding the corner, that makes a lot of sense. And the buffering of the new residential to the, to the residential that's been there for a while, I know that was one of the major concerns that those folks had was any, any kind of commercial in there was going to be a problem. And I think you addressed those concerns well, given that there was no one here to speak tonight in opposition. So, I appreciate that and the work that you did to work with them over the last several years. So, obviously, for that reason, I will be supporting this motion as well.
Yeah, I think the fact that we did not have public testimony on this is an indication that you all had indeed done your, done your work with the neighborhood, because certainly this is a neighborhood that can be vocal. And the word we were getting was that indeed, you know, through the neighborhood meeting process and that you truly did listen to the neighborhood in terms of bringing this project forward. So, I congratulate you on that. That passes six to zero with Mr. McGough being absent. Thank you. That ends our public hearings. We now have another opportunity for public comment if anybody would like to address City Council at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council comments or questions. Ms. Ford.
I'd like to invite my District 1 residents to my meet and greet this Wednesday at Trinity Presbyterian Church from 6:30 to 8:30. And even though some of you may no longer be in my district, you're still welcome to come on Wednesday.
They're still, they're still part of you for, right now. It's the next election. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I just want to make a comment, the young boy that was, gave the public, I could have hired him. You know, that's what I do at CDOT, so I was like, huh, future workforce of the future right there.
Yeah, yeah, he was very articulate, well-spoken, very well-spoken. Okay, Mr. Devon?
We have a workshop next Monday. We will be talking about Land Development Code update. Aida will provide an update, and we will also provide an update on our 2019 update to the strategic plan.
Very good, anything from the city attorney's office?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good, I do want to congratulate the city attorney's office for their work on that Rule 106 action. Great work by our, by our team. We received a favorable court decision last week and know that a lot of time and energy went into it. And a reaffirmation that the advice we had been given by our city attorneys in terms of how we proceeded with that hearing was the correct advice and that by following their, their guidance, the district court agreed with the procedural steps that we took.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll pass your congratulations on to staff.
Very good. With that, we stand adjourned.